It shut my lawn down, so.
I read.
A flip to the.
What I'm here for.
Just a good evening, everybody. If you can just give us a few seconds, it's weird. Miss Stacy is trying to make a phone call real quick. Our January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one meeting is now called to order. We have invocation by yours truly, pledge of allegiance by Councilman Harrington. May we all stand? Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you tonight for giving us another opportunity to assemble here to handle the business of this great, wonderful city. We pray God that you will guide us, that we will be decent and in order, but that we will also handle the business well. It's in your son's name, in your son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please follow me in the pledge of allegiance.
The allegiance to the land, the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united by God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have the reading and approval of the minutes of our January eleventh, twenty twenty-one meeting.
Mayor, I'm gonna ask the minutes we read, please, the last meeting. You want them read?
I want them read.
I don't, I don't.
They're not ready. I make a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the last meeting of January, I believe, eleventh, twenty twenty-one.
All right, do we have a?
Second.
All right. A motion has been made and seconded. Any questions or comments from the council? Any public comments? All right, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
P T?
Yes.
All right, the motion carries. Next item on the agenda, and we need a motion to amend the agenda here.
May I also move that we amend the agenda to add the audit to the report?
Okay.
Audit report to the agenda.
Second.
All right. Motion has been made and seconded. Questions, comments, council at this point? Public comments at this point? All right, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
P T?
Yes.
All right, we have here tonight, and we wanna invite them to come, Ms. Jessica Broadway and Mark Thomas, to come and discuss the audit that was recently concluded.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jessica Broadway from Thomas Cunningham Broadway in Totenbeere. The first statement I would like to make is this is the second meeting I've been left off the agenda this month to present the audit. I'm beginning, I feel hurt here. Um, I know this is super important to y'all, I mean, but anyway, I think each of you have been given a copy of the audit report. This audit report is eighty-nine pages. I am not fixing to sit here and go over the whole audit report unless Miss Sylvia wants me to. Um, but however, I will just kind of make some comments on the audit. The audit has to be completed every year. The city's year end is May thirty-first, and it is due to the Louisiana Legislative Auditor by November thirtieth. This year, due to COVID, it was, it was a little after that, but it was no harm to the report. I mean, there was no late finding, anything like that. What I will say is that the financial health of the city is very good, as well as their internal controls, which is what we look at when we're going through this audit. That's, we see how well they are performing their duties. I do want to mention also, like I said, I'm not gonna go through everything, but we do have a couple or three accounts, and I've got to get to it here, that, I apologize, the main one I'm gonna speak of is the capital projects funds, due to, the streets funds. Due to, last year, there were all of the road, many roads were completed in the city, as, you know, I know you are all aware, and due to all of that, the Capital Projects Streets Fund is, was at the end of May thirty-first, left with a four-point-one million dollar deficit.
Excuse me, could you tell us what page you're on?
I'm so sorry. Yes, ma'am, we're on page seventeen. And you'll see in that second column, the Capital Projects Streets Fund. Now, they are working to pay this off, but I, each year, financing money to get this cleared out, but I did just wanna note that this was an issue at the end of May thirty-first, twenty twenty. Um, that's really all that I have, unless y'all have other questions. If you wanna talk numbers at any time, call me if you have any questions about the report, but are there any?
I just had one, just a clarification, and the summary of audit results?
Yes.
And it says there's no findings in accordance with government standards. It did state, though, that since the city did not present all of its component units, an adverse opinion was issued. I just wanted, what is that, the component units? Can you explain that?
There, the city can be considered a reporting entity, and in the reporting entity, it includes Nauchus City Court, Nauchus City Marshal, and Water Works District One. Those three component units, we do not include in our audit report. Those entities receive their own audits.
Yeah.
So we report on the primary government, which is what that paragraph goes on to say, that it is the primary government of the city is unmodified or a good opinion.
So it's a technicality, basically, and they receive their own audits anyways, so.
That's right.
That's all I.
Now, you said they haven't had, they have had a problem paying off. Who are you referring to? You said they?
I may have not spoken correctly. When I say that, I mean, the finance department are working to pay off this debt with transfers from other funds each year.
And, Ms. Broadway, we kinda talked, because we met on Thursday. It doesn't have a page number, but the one management's discussion and analysis is at the beginning.
Yes, sir.
It's specifically our bond and notes payable, and we see that's a nineteen million dollar.
Yes, sir.
Figure right there.
That's right.
Do, and maybe this is a, this is a Miss Molly question, I don't know, maybe, because we know there was an increase because, you know, we're starting to pay on the park, Park Nauchus. Do we remember what it was prior to this fiscal year, and what's the number that kicked in? I just kinda thought about that today.
The bonds were put on the books. Let me see, I can tell you what the balance was at the beginning of the year. I don't think there was much paid on them last year, when, I'm sorry, when I say last year, I mean, year ending twenty nineteen, and now we're in twenty twenty-one, but I don't remember a whole lot being paid on them in that year. But.
We paid one-point-six, Jessica. We did pay one-point-six on it.
So one point, so there was, so there was.
So we did pay some on it. We had, so the one-point-five came into play in twenty, and the last one, too. So they both paid.
So there were payments in both years. Now, the balance, and I don't have it split. The twenty-eighteen sales tax revenue, the balance outstanding at May thirty-first, twenty twenty, was eleven-point-one million.
Okay.
And that is broken down on page forty-three, if you just wanna jot that down, but that'll give you the balances outstanding by bond. Four-point-one million. Now, of course, it's been reduced now. That's just what it was, May thirty-first, twenty twenty.
Any other question for, I'm sorry, is it miss or misses?
It's misses.
Misses.
Mis- whatever, I'm married.
So, so, Mrs. Broadway, any other questions? All right, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Broadway. And again, council, if there are questions that you have later, I think your email and number and everything is in here.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Moving on, moving on to number zero-six-five, Councilwoman at Large, Smith.
Yes, Mayor, this is on for final vote. Ordinance, I'm sorry, ordinance number oh-six-five. And it reads, it's an ordinance declaring certain buildings unsafe and recommending that the same be demolished or put into repair to comply with the building code. Whereas the city building inspector and the director of planning and zoning have filed written reports with the city council declaring that the buildings listed below are in dangerous and unsanitary condition, which makes them unsafe and endangering the public welfare, and recommended that said buildings be demolished or put in repair to comply with the building code to it. These buildings being Lot Thirty of Briarwood, subdivision, unit number three, physical address ten-oh-three, Clarence Drive, Freddie L. Bonner. Lot ten, block F of Nauchus Heights, physical address six-oh-six, Sabine Alley, Bridgette De Mars. Lot eleven, block C of Pinehurst Edition, four-twenty-one Julia Street, Patrice Shepherd. Lot five and six, block D and Lot twelve, block C of Pinehurst Edition, four-twenty Julia Street, Jacqueline Parker. And Lot nine, block one of Lincoln Edition, fourteen-thirteen Dixie Street, Marvin Rachel. This audit was introduced on December fourteen, twenty twenty, and published in the Nauchus Times on December seventeenth, twenty twenty. And this is for final vote.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
I don't think motion was made yet, was it?
Big point?
We need a motion from somebody on the council.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance number sixty-five, two thousand twenty.
Second.
All right, motion has been made and seconded here. Council, you got any questions or comments?
Yeah, you know, I hate, I hate to see it get to this point without being able to work with individuals and try to, so I was seeing if there's been any update on any of these, or.
Well, actually, for four-twenty-one Julia Street, the owners themselves have actually pulled the demolition permit.
Okay.
They were supposed to work on that this past weekend. On four-twenty Julia Street, they pulled a permit. They haven't been able to move forward because of COVID. But on the other ones for ten-oh-three Clarence Drive, six-oh-six Sabine Alley, and fourteen-thirteen, fourteen-thirteen Dixie Street, that house has been burned over three years, and he hasn't tried to work with us on anything. On the lot for ten-oh-three Clarence Drive, Mr. Freddie Bonner, that home was actually repot from the young man, but he has not stepped forward to take any responsibility. The house has been stripped of everything, no doors, no windows, anything. So we work with everyone, trying to give them as much time as we can. I just wanna say this. I know it's hard on a lot of property owners and people that's trying to do the right thing, but my take on this, you know, I mean, we need to keep the city looking as decent as we can, and if you've had problems with your property over three, five, ten years, if you haven't done anything, more than likely, you're not gonna do anything to it. And so, I hate this, but we've got to start somewhere. I may make a lot of people mad, but you got to start somewhere.
I agree, Councilwoman.
We got to take responsibility.
And we just wanted to kinda show, I think Miss Rock went and took some pictures, after pictures, and so there has been some cleaning up over there at four-twenty-one Julia Street, but as she just mentioned, they did pull the permit to start the demo and everything like that.
Correct.
All right, any public comments?
Thanks for the update.
You're welcome.
And I don't think we have anybody here about any one of these properties, or do we?
No.
No?
No, sir.
All right, no more public comments, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
P T?
Yes.
Number zero-zero-one, Councilman P T.
Thank you. Ordinance number zero-zero-one of twenty twenty-one, and ordinance approving the policy and procedure for applications for rebate of sales and use taxes for Nauchus Economic Development District A and C, State of Louisiana, providing for advertising, further providing, further providing for a repellent and effective date of ordinance. And I so move that ordinance zero-zero-one be adopted.
Second.
All right, motion has been made and seconded. Any public, I'm sorry, any comments or questions from the council on this?
I have a question. I don't know who to answer it. Mr. McWherter, yeah, he's here. I have a couple questions. One, is this, do the businesses have to pay the tax first, and they're asking for it, or can they file the rebate before they actually pay it?
All taxes must be paid upfront to the vendors by the businesses before a rebate can be audited and determined on what money they would be giving back for that amount.
Okay, and the, it wasn't a hundred percent clear to me in the paperwork, the ten-thousand-two-hundred-four dollars, is that a total from all vendors for a quarter, or is that per vendor?
You wanna submit your amendment to that, Mr. Mayor, or you want me to answer it based on ten thousand dollars?
Well.
Well, any amount, any amount.
Well, as it sits in the rebate program that you have before you, it's ten-thousand-two-hundred-four dollars.
Right.
Okay, that's all invoices paid during the quarter for the business.
From any vendors?
From anything that they purchase to operate and use on their, at their business.
Right.
Paid on the quarter, if it reaches ten thousand dollars or more, then a rebate can be submitted to the task commission for an audit to determine the full amount of the refund that would be, or rebate that would be applicable. If it's less than ten-thousand-two-hundred-four dollars, then there, you would not qualify for the rebate process.
And just the bullet point, the first bullet point up there kinda tells you some of the things that this may apply to in terms of what businesses may buy, that they could recoup this tax on supplies, materials, furniture, fixtures, machinery, you know, those are some of the things that, that can be purchased, and then they can get this rebate for.
I think this also includes, like with the hotels, tissue, things like that, amenities that they give to their customers.
Say that again?
And amenities that they give to their visitors, like the little shampoos.
Anything that a business use in order to operate their business would be subject to an audit and review for rebate purposes.
And one of the concerns was, and Mr. McWherter, you and I talked about this on a couple occasions, was, you know, if a business doesn't reach that ten-thousand-two-hundred-four amount, of course, they wouldn't qualify, and since this is a quality basis, and so I think some of the businesses, I know they had a concern about, well, I may not reach that ten thousand in the first quarter, but maybe I get there in the second quarter, and, you know, so again, we've had that conversation, and the previous administration, and I talked to Mayor Posey, honestly, did not want to charge the use tax, and so that's why we've got this rebate program, which is written by your office.
That's correct. Now, you have to charge the, we have to understand that the tax has to be paid in total.
Right, right.
If a business out wherever in A or C purchases an item to use in their business, they have to pay the sales tax on the item. It's not an exemption from the one percent tax.
It's a, they'll get it back.
In order to get it back.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
You're right. And so what Mr. McWherter was referring to is, and I'll go ahead and say it now, there will be a change made tonight in the attached policy and procedure document in terms of the dollar amount for qualifying invoices, and it will be reduced by one-half from ten-thousand-two-hundred-four dollars to five-thousand-one-hundred-and-two dollars, and wanna let the minutes reflect this change, and.
I think, I could be wrong, but in order, if we're gonna vote on it, I think we have to vote to change that, because what's presented to us now has the ten thousand number, so I think we have to vote to change that to the five.
Well, I know, Miss Stacy, I know you talked to.
Tommy.
Tommy, so you wanna share with Tommy?
Yeah, Tommy said we could do, let the minutes reflect, but if y'all wanna vote on it, we certainly can do that. I mean, you know, it's whatever y'all feel comfortable with, but we could do this, what we're doing right now, letting the minutes reflect, since it is a decrease, not an increase.
Well, I think, yeah, I think Miss Harrington is, you know, we're asking for the legislation to be amended, so we're asking for a slight change, so the mayor is right, he making the request on the record and in the minutes, and I think the council's saying we want to make a motion to amend it for the public, and then they'll take a public vote on that amendment. So we all right.
And, and look, and let me say this, it's not in the, and we, we talked about this, Miss Saxon, it's not in the actual legislation, and, uh, i- it's in the, what Mr. McWherter put together.
It's in the program.
It's in the program.
It's in, right, it's not in the actual ordinance, does the ordinance specifically address the ten thousand two oh four? It's in the actual program as far as the requirements and the procedures with which to apply for and receive this abatement period.
Okay, I thought you had it as an attachment to the legislation.
That is correct, yes, so the, the ordinance is approving the policy and procedures, so, I mean, yes.
Right.
So, I mean, you could do it either way.
That's what.
Yeah, I think this is the most simple way, but, uh.
Do you think we need to vote on it, just, what, what are you?
Yeah, just for the record purposes, we, we are making a, a subsequent change to the amount, so.
So vote on?
Yeah, if you put it in the minutes, the mayor put it in the minutes, and I think we, the council can vote in favor of.
I, I'll make a motion to.
Well, and I guess procedurally, we've got a motion already that we haven't voted on, uh, which is the, you know, my motion we just made to approve uh, this, so procedurally, so what do we need to say so we get it correct?
Well, I think I'd make a, right now, I'd make a motion before we approve, we vote on that, to amend this, to just change that number.
That's in the, that's in the attachment to the.
A second, that's what we need to do.
So I, I'll make a motion now to amend what's before us and change the amount listed from ten thousand two hundred and
Four.
Four dollars to
Five.
Five thousand.
One hundred and two.
One hundred and two dollars? So I'll make that motion.
That's your official motion, we got a second, I think?
A second.
Alright, um, any comments, any more comments, council? Councilman Nelson, nothing? Public comments about this? Alright, councilor?
I had a question.
Yes, sir.
So with the decrease, that puts the businesses in better position to take advantage of the rebate?
It, it means they have a, they can get to the rebate program sooner.
That's right.
Yeah, that, that's what it means, so yeah, it, it would be a better, better position.
I think that's better.
Okay? Alright, yes, ma'am?
So this is effective in the meeting?
Yeah, this would be.
It's effective in the meeting, but it's retroactive, back to January of twenty twenty. The ordinance states, I believe in the last paragraph, that it's effective when the Tax Commission begin to collect the, uh, taxes. The one percent increase, and that was in January of twenty twenty. Yes, ma'am.
Alright, no other questions, comments? We'll put that motion to a roll call vote?
Okay, Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
P T?
Yes.
Alright, that motion carries to change that number, uh.
I'm sorry, I have a lot of questions, alright, then. How will this affect the overall amount, is, do you have any?
You talk. In term of dollar estimates, w- w- we don't, I, I don't know, Mr. McWherter, if you, you can answer that better?
Exact number of rebate that we will receive, there's some thirty-six businesses in, uh, districts A and C which could or could not, uh, participate in the rebate program. Uh, so we're not sure once it's approved here at the council tonight, and we notify these businesses that the program is available, should they want to participate, to wait and see how many actually do participate in the program to determine a dollar amount of, uh, refund of this rebate. Right now, we have no idea, but we are collecting and separating, uh, my office is separating that one percent tax out of the city sales tax, so that we do have that in a fund waiting to determine those numbers.
Alright, thank you all. Now, we do have that earlier motion, um, we don't have to motion again, do we, Saxon? We got that early motion hanging out there, which is basically to adopt, uh, number zero zero one. Uh, like I said, motion was made, it was seconded as well. Any more council comments or questions about that? Good. Public comments? Alright, roll call vote?
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
P T?
Yes.
Alright, that motion carries. Um, the next thing on the agenda, actually, which is zero zero four, where it's gonna happen, and thank you, Mr. McWherter, gonna be on the February twenty-second meeting, and that's when it will be final, not tonight, alright? So, um, just wanted to state that clearly, so that means we're moving on to number zero zero five, Councilman Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor, the following ordinance was introduced at the January eleventh, two thousand twenty-one City Council Meeting as follows. Ordinance number zero zero five of two thousand twenty-one, and the ordinance amending the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget to reflect additional revenues and expenditures. And I move to adopt ordinance number five of two thousand twenty-one.
A second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded, and you see here, um, o- on the screen, that we've got uh, what these budget amendments are about, um, capital projects, and then the Christmas festival, then general fund. Uh, uh, Ms. Debbie, do, is there any way you could just give us a brief on this?
Yeah, this was where we're moving, we got some extra money from, uh, the CARES Act, and these are some of the dollars we're moving for, to show that they went into, some of them into utilities, where's the, there's, is there more to it?
No, that's, that's all.
Just a revenue, okay. That's the only page?
Let me, you, you talk, let, let me see, if, I think that's the only one, yeah, because this next one is
Yep.
Something else, that's all we have there, maybe we didn't include everything we should have?
Okay, so that's, that's what we're, the hundred thousand is for on the utility department, it was to pay for the storm. When we had the storm, we had to move money in order to pay for the electric, for the people to come into town, and so we didn't have the money in utilities at that point, because it wasn't budgeted, we didn't know we'd have the storm. So we used money from general fund to take care of it until we can get FEMA money back, so this is what we're doing. Once we get FEMA money back, we'll give it back to general fund.
Okay, questions, council? Any public comments?
Uh, we've been, we're still extending stuff, but, uh, we are on the express pay. They are telling us that we should be able to see some, hopefully in the next sixty to ninety days.
Okay, alright, no more public comments, roll call vote?
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
P T?
Yes.
Alright, the motion carries. Um, next item on the agenda is on for introduction, and it's number zero zero six, Councilman Harrington.
An ordinance approving a second amendment to that lease entered into with the United States government for the lease, all or a portion of the property located at six oh seven Trudeau Street, Depot Street, and seven twenty-sixth Street, Natchez, Louisiana, and authorizing the execution of the lease amendment by the mayor, Ronnie Williams Junior, after due compliance with the law, and further providing for advertising of the lease agreement and an effective date, and this is for introduction only.
Okay, uh, Mr. Randy Lacazette, will you come to the podium, please, sir, and, uh, you know how this goes, state your name, and you can kind of explain what this is about. As we see on the right is the Eagle Distribution, and then on the left is the Depot, go ahead, Mr. Randy Lacazette.
Mayor, what we did, after we were given the go that it would be our project, we signed the twenty-year lease. At the point at which there was some technical language that the Park Service couldn't accept, that became the First Amendment. The dates were not changed. We sent it to, allowed it to be executed, uh, by the, the main guy at the Park Service after you had executed it. When we got it back, they had amended the commencement date to February first of twenty twenty, because by law, they cannot pay rent prior to taking possession of the facilities. They will be moving in starting first part of this coming week, and that's the reason for us ratifying it through an amended ordinance, uh, to, um, make sure that, I guess there's an acknowledgement of the change in the date.
Okay.
That, that was September the thirteenth of two thousand nineteen.
Okay, so it's been a little while ago. Alright.
Alright.
A- any questions, any, any council? Public comments? Alright, this is on for introduction, so, uh, we'll vote the next time. Our next item, and actually final, uh, item in which we're, we're considering, um, and we do have a financial report coming from, uh, Ms. Molly, but, um, number zero zero eight, Councilwoman Washington, Eli.
Thank you, Mayor. Number zero zero eight is a resolution, and it's a resolution to authorize the the agreement of the airport transportation of, for pu- for improvements, sorry about that. And the, whereas the city attorney has requested funding assisting with the L.A. Department of Destruction of the Runway, phrase one, and that amount for, it'll be reimbursed for thirteen thou- for thirteen thousand five, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars for the project. And Mayor, before I adopt that, I'd like for Mr. Lee Poser to explain to the board exactly what would be going on with the reimbursement of the projects for the runway.
Okay, um, could we have a motion? Could we have the motion and then the, uh, second, and then we'll allow Mr. Ed Lee to, uh, to, to answer some questions or whatever, okay? Alright, do we have a motion?
I make a motion, sorry about that, Mr. Resolution. I make a motion, that the resolution be accepted.
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded, alright, Mr. Ed Lee.
Yeah, this is a grant that will fund an obstruction removal study. What they'll do is they'll, and obstructions around airports are typically trees, trees grow, and you know, one year, they, they may be okay, but two or three years down the road, the trees will be, you know, be considered a hazard for the airport. So periodically, we do, um, obstruction studies, and that's what this is, it was done with a drone, and more particular, on the west side of the airport, and this is a study only. They will, the L.A. DOTD and the airport consultant will analyze the study and make a recommendation, are there trees that need to be removed, and if so, with this drone, they, they pinpoint each and every tree and the height of the tree. And they will identify what, if anything, needs to be removed, and if anything needs to be removed, it will be a project that will be separate from this, that, uh, will fund the removal of any of the obstructions or trees.
And regardless of what the study says, we're gonna get reimbursed fully.
Yes, absolutely.
Any other questions or comments, council?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any public comments on this particular matter? Alright, roll call vote?
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
P T?
Yes.
Alright, that motion carries. And item number nine is our financial report, uh, Ms. Debbie Miley.
Okay, everyone, uh, y'all have your sales tax reports, we have our sales tax collections year-to-date. We are up, we haven't had, we still haven't had a down, so we're doing good, and this is through October sales. You have, we have the sales tax distribution, which is, was just, was distributed, so we're up five point two, five percent on it. We've got year-to-date, as far as calendar year also, you, we have that report, that you have a year-to-date sales report. The others are physical, this is the calendar year, you're up six point five four percent. You have your TIF funds, our two percent TIF. We're up two point seven three on our physical year, which is four thousand eleven dollars, so it's not large, but we're still up some, okay? You have the, uh, sales tax distribution revenue year-to-date, which is our physical year, we're up six point three oh percent, and that's four hundred and eight thousand. And then we also show the TIF fund for our physical year, and it's up by six thousand based on our physical year. You have the motor vehicle report, and it's a calendar year, and it's up nine point six six percent. And then the report that has the hotel motel collections, that shows how we get each fund for our EDDC and our, um, economic development and our TIF. So that's all the different, for it, for our calendar year. Are there any questions?
And, and Ms. Debbie, you said this is through October, right?
This is through October sales, yes, sir, reported in November, and we get them in December, so yes, sir.
So our Christmas fest, all that stuff, we got the games, uh, that's yet to come, and we're already hearing the word up, so th- this is good. Um, it's one of those, um, kind of, I don't know, mind-boggling things about the pandemic, we've actually, some areas have been down, but yeah, some areas have been strong, so.
Holding our own.
Is that the?
That's all I have.
That's all you have, okay? Alright, well, um, uh, only thing left to do is to, uh, we've got a few announcements, and, um, as we see, February first, we're gonna do, I'm gonna do, I guess, uh, twenty twenty-one annual State of the City Address. Just want to give you, uh, some updates, we've been talking to department heads, we're gonna continue to talk more, talk about improvements that, um, uh, need to be made, kind of put out some, um, quote-unquote, vision, if you will. And, uh, so we'll have that, don't want it to be a terribly long speech, but, um, and because of the pandemic, we are inviting media, uh, but, uh, that's pretty much all we're inviting, uh, for that. Uh, also, you can see our next meeting is going to be on, uh, February eighth, um, and that's gonna be our next scheduled City Council meeting. Uh, before we, uh, get a motion to adjourn, I do want to, uh, thank everybody who came together to help to plan the MLK, uh, weekend. Um, I want to, uh, appreciate everybody who was, uh, who I asked, and who served on, uh, the board, if you will. Um, and I don't want to miss anybody, but, uh, Dr. Snowden, uh, Mrs. Lisa Wiggins, Mrs. Jennifer Mangum. I think we had some folks at, uh, NSU, a young lady by the name of Rousard, and there may have been some others as well, I'm just not as, uh, familiar. Ms. Crystal Davis, Ms. Nicole Gray, Mrs. Rebecca Blankenbaker, Mrs. Hannah Wininger, and Mr. Howard Conde. And we also put together a virtual program where people from, uh, the Natchez community, um, sent in different videos, praise dance, that's still up on YouTube, uh, for you to watch, and we're just so grateful for our IT, uh, department working diligent to get that done, okay? So I just wanted to say that, uh, I want to say that very clearly, and appreciate all the hard work for that, alright? Um, nothing else, we're going to. Uh, yeah, if you, yeah, yeah, you, 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 you may, can you do that?
For the records, uh, Sylvia Morrow, I almost said Councilwoman, uh, but, really, in, uh, all fairness, I'd like, if you don't mind, in the future, if we live to see two twenty-two, if you would be kind enough to get with our host committee, the Natchez Black Heritage Committee, and see can we work this thing together, because in order to bring our community together, we need to work together. And we have a longstanding committee for over twenty years who've been working in this neighborhood with programs, especially the Martin Luther King Program, and we had to cancel our program because of the way the structure. But if we sit down and plan together, then we could make sure things work well together. I'm open, Mr. Ward is open, other committee members open, and we know each other very well. So if we could sit down and do that, so we will have harmony in our neighborhood, and I thank you kindly.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I'm speaking on behalf of the Natchis Black Heritage Committee and the community at large, because timelines, we just didn't get together, but we can get together. And I want to support you, and that's the only way I know to do it, we can work together.
Thank you, alright, um, at this time, we'll get a motion to adjourn.
I so move, that we adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, alright, motion is made, it's seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, most, uh.